The City Council of the City of Mamvel to order November 7, 2022. We have completed our five o'clock workshop and now we are in regular session. And we have an inspirational reading by Councilmember Hudson.
Thank you. I just came up with some gems of wisdom, so to speak. I just, I was reading and it ran across it and it sounded pretty, pretty good. Everyone has a motto they live by. Don't underestimate me, that's one of them. I think more than I speak, that's another one. I know more than I say, and I notice more than you realize.
Very good. All right, would you stand and join me in the pledges, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. To the Texas flag, honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Next, we have a public hearing to hear comments on a request for closure and abandonment of a 40-foot wide unnamed and unimproved road easement of record in Volume Three, Page 139 of the Bressoria County Platte Records in the MV O'Donnell Survey Abstract Number 479, being part of 116.90 acre tract, including tract one, 35.298 acres, and tract two, 80.247 acres in BCCF number 202-0004157. Three calls to see who would like to speak to this. Is there anybody, call one, who would like to speak to this public hearing? Call two, anyone who would like to speak at this public hearing? And call three, anyone who would like to speak? All right, next we have public comments. Has somebody collected those? Did we receive any public comments or comment cards? No? All right, next we have a city manager's update.
Mayor and councilmembers, I have a couple of items for you. In case you didn't hear, the Astros won. They had a really, really, really big parade today, so congratulations to them. And I saw at least one person in the back that had an Astros hat on, so well done. Oh, and a shirt, very good. Everybody will probably be seeing a lot more of those in the upcoming days, so. The annual, or not the annual, the meeting update on COVID from the Bressoria County website. This is comparing it to the last meeting on the 17th. We had one additional confirmed case. We have total of 10 in the city. We have six probable cases, that's up four from the last meeting. We are up 15 recovered cases from the previous one. We had one additional COVID-related death. We're up to 51 since mid-2020. A total number of cases is 7,553. That's up 21, obviously, from the last meeting. There's two other items. One, if you haven't driven down Cemetery, Crest Ridge, Georgia, and Alabama, the county is helping pave those. They've been reclaimed, hopefully shortly. They're going to be tackleiled and then paved, hopefully this week or so. That's a big number that the county's going to be helping us with. The other, the other sort of last item is tomorrow is the City State of the City presentation. It's at the Chamber of Commerce. Luncheon event tomorrow at the Casey Hall over in Alvin on Highway Six. Usually starts around 11:30 with the presentation at noon, and the mayor and I will be, the mayor will be giving and I will be assisting the mayor with the State of the City. As soon as it gets done, we'll be posting it on the social media and the website and other places, so if you're able to come, you're more than welcome to. You'll be recognized at the event as well, so. Those are the three items that I have for you this evening.
Thank you. All right.
Oh, Mayor, we have one other item. Chris was going to mention it.
Yes, good evening. I know it's kind of a hot button issue right now, but I would be remiss in my duties as a manager if I didn't say that on the 28th, the city held its Second Annual Trunk or Treat Celebration, and it was a great success, from what we were seeing. They gave approximately 200 bags for the children, and I think they had about 20 left over, which according to my candy count was about the same. I counted about 175, 180, even though I did dress like a demon clown and had plenty of children that didn't want to come get candy. As I said, I would be remiss if I didn't say a huge shout out to the three ladies in the court, Rihanna Bob, Rihanna Robertson, and Megan Balko. They enlisted the help of their teen court volunteers as well. They had some face painting setups, they had some games set up out there. If any of you are interested in the procedure it takes to do an event, you can go ask any of those three ladies, because they went through all the legwork. They came and even asked me some questions on the permit applications that they were trying to fill out. I, of course, threw my hands up in the air and said, "Go ask Laura. She'll be happy to help you walk through that." But if you want any further details, they probably have a ton of details. We're going to hope to go bigger and better next year.
It was an awesome event. They really did a great job, and it was, it was all a mist of a fair amount of drizzle, so, so more kudos than usual. And I will say that my grandson walked up to Chris and said, although he didn't get close, said, "Spooky. You wanted nothing to do with that guy." So, but it was, it was a great event, and I'm pleased that it was successful.
I'm sure the community and all of the pediatric dentists in the, in the community are thankful for your service.
We try hard, you know? All right, so now we move to the consent agenda.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to amend the consent agenda by striking from Number Two, the Blue Water Lakes Section Two, and adding from the regular agenda to the consent agenda items one, two, seven, eight, and nine, and to approve as amended.
One, two, seven, eight, and nine. All right, no objection? That one doesn't usually get very many objections.
Great, I'll second.
All right, all those in favor? All those opposed? Now we have, we need to vote on the consent agenda.
Yes, ma'am.
So, okay.
Yeah.
And I'll second that motion, so all those in, in favor of approving the consent agenda as amended? And that's a seven-zero vote. Thank you very much. Thank you, Jason. So that puts us at number three. Consideration and possible action to fill the vacancy on the zoning board of adjustment, the zoning board of adjustment board. All right.
Mayor and councilmembers, Mr. George Collins has tendered his resignation from the ZBOA. You have applications for three individuals that are interested in serving at, on the ZBOA, Donald Hensley, Donald Atkinson, and Martina McNichols. It's up to the council to decide who you'd want to appoint to that, and a motion and a second and a vote would, would appoint them to that.
Anybody have any motions? Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to name Martina McNichols to the board.
Okay, I'll second that.
All right. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries seven-zero. Thank you. And thank you for the other people who volunteered. We appreciate you offering to serve. I will say, the Board of Adjustment, years ago when I was on it, met once in three years' time, so that's a, that's a great board to be a part of. So, all right, number four. Consideration and possible action to approve the first of two readings of Ordinance 2022-0-29, an ordinance of the City of Mamvel, Texas, finding and determining that public convenience and necessity no longer require the continued existence of a 40-foot city right-of-way consisting of approximately 1.354 acres of land, being an unnamed and unimproved road easement of record in Volume Three, Page 139 of the Bressoria County Platte Records in the MV O'Donnell Survey Abstract Number 479, being part of 116.90 acre tract, including tract one, 35.298 acres, and tract two, 80.247 acres in BCCF number 202-0004157, in the City of Mamvel, Bressoria County, Texas. Vacating, abandoning, and closing said public right-of-way, authorizing the mayor to execute and the city secretary to attest, respectively, quick claim deeds conveying respective interests in said abandoned right-of-way to the abutting property owners, providing for severability and containing other provisions relating to the subject, forwarded with favorable recommendation by PDNC.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second that motion.
All right, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries seven-zero. Number five. Consideration and possible action to approve the first of two readings of Ordinance 2022-0-30, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Mamvel, Texas, Chapter 53, signs, by revisiting the regulations pertaining to signs within the City of Mamvel and extraterritorial jurisdiction, providing a penalty in an amount not to exceed $2,000 for any violation of any provision, provision of this ordinance, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent or in conflict herewith and providing for severability.
I'll move to approve.
Mayor, just a clarification. This is with the comment that you made during the workshop about...
I figure it is what it is now, and if she doesn't clean it, clean it up, then take it up later next time around.
Got it.
And there you have it. That's why I was silent for a few minutes, but, you know, if, if that's, if that's the way we're going to deal with it, let's do it. Let's do it. All right, so we have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries seven-zero.
Six-one.
All right, number six. Consideration and possible action to approve the first of two readings of Ordinance 2022-0-31, an ordinance of the City of Mamvel, Texas, amending Chapter 50, Planning and Development, Article Three, Comprehensive Plan, by amending Section 50 through 53, Master Drainage Plan, approving the update to the city's master drainage plan, providing for conformity of all drainage regulations to the 2022 Master Drainage Plan, providing a penalty in an amount not to exceed $2,000 per day for each day of violation of any provision hereof, and providing for severability, and providing a severance clause and effective date. Yes, sir.
Sure. You actually had this before you back in the summer, and we've just been waiting for the master drainage plan to get approved at the drainage districts as well. That has happened now, so it's finally, kind of like what Kyle alluded to earlier, we're trying to get everyone else to get their stuff done before we bring it to you. So that's why the date is from, what, July 29th, back when the engineer presented it to us. So nothing has changed on our documents since then.
Okay, so do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
And I'll second that.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries seven-zero. All right, number nine. No, not number nine. Number 10. Consideration and possible action to direct staff on the maintenance of Carpenter Road and working with Bressoria County for the acceptance and dedication of Carpenter Road to the city.
Mayor and councilmembers, back in 1971, Mr. R.L. Furnas broke up this piece of property and eventually sold it off to the people that now live there. Also, he filed a deed granting from him to the county the 60-foot road, road right-of-way easement. Bobby, and you saw an email in, or sort of a string of emails. Bobby had asked Mary Schein, who's the Assistant District Attorney, if she could find out if the county ever accepted the dedication. And as far as the county is, they've never accepted it, which means it's never been accepted as a county road. But one of the things that we asked Mary was, would the, would there be a way that the county could transfer it to the city? And I think sort of the, the long drawn-out discussion that we had was, the process would need to be, the county would have to accept it and then transfer it to the city. The city would then have to accept the transfer, and then it would become a city road. So the suggestion to you would be, the city can't go out and maintain public property, because if it hasn't been accepted by the county, then it's, it's a private property. But I think they're willing to sort of take it and pass it along to the city if that's what you want us to do. So that's the suggestion that I would make, is if you want us to sort of follow through with that process, we go back, we talk to Mary Schein, and see if we can get them to accept it and some sort of transfer from the city, from the county to the city. And Bobby probably has more.
I think the only other alternative is, because the property owners don't own that little part of right-of-way, it was actually, because it wasn't platted back in the day, that right-of-way or what should be right-of-way is all in one lot. It was supposed to have been conveyed by Mr. R.L. Furnas, who's now deceased. It's not owned by the, the adjacent property owner, so we can't go to each property owner and say, "Hey, please give us a deed to your little part of that road." We'd have to go find the heirs of Mr. Furnas most likely to get that strip that is actually its own separate lot, which was deeded to the county, but it never accepted into the county road system. So I think the alternative would be, we'd have to go and try to find the heirs of Mr. Furnas, which might be difficult.
I'm going to recommend we not do that. I'm going to ask that the council give direction to the city manager who gave us the path to accepting this private road to be a public road onto our maintenance list, if that is the will of the council. If I can get a motion, is that what I'm asking?
Yeah, did you make a motion?
Did you make a motion?
That would be the motion.
Okay, and I will second that motion.
Be done with that.
All right. All those in favor? All those opposed? And the motion carries seven-zero. Thank you. Consideration and possible action to direct staff on the following, as requested by Councilmember Hane and Councilmember Perry. Special events policy, Code of Ordinances, Chapter 33, food and food handlers, and Code of Ordinances, Chapter 35, Article 10, mobile food vendors. This was requested by Councilmember Hane and Councilmember Perry. It was tabled at the 10-17-22 council meeting.
I think what we've done is, that was part of the discussion during the workshop, and what we're going to do from that discussion was, we're going to bring back updates to the mobile food truck ordinance and an events policy. Those are the two things that come out, that came out of that discussion. I don't think you need to take any action on this. What we'll do is, we'll simply bring those back when we have them ready for you to take a look at.
Do we need to table it? Or, because if we take no action, does it not just go away?
If you table it, it comes back at the next council meeting. I don't know if we have enough time to draw up a special events policy by that time, but we're going to work towards it.
If we take no action on it, it goes away forever until somebody comes back and puts it back on the agenda, right?
Yeah, but we're going to put it on the agenda so that you can deal with it. That's to you.
Not the sponsor, so I'll, I'll deal to them.
I think we had a really good discussion, and we're on the right track, so I would like for this to be done timeline-wise by the end of the year, because I know there's a good thing for you guys to be doing right now, but we're going to get into that season again in the spring, so would it be prudent to ask that the county, it's a very first of December?
Sure.
Would that be a good timeline for everybody and all of the things that are going on?
I didn't see a, a real nod over there. Why don't, do we need a little bit more time here? I mean, that gives us...
We will work on it to get you a draft of them.
That's only one month.
At the...
Okay. Okay. Okay.
And that's why I want to be clear about that, because again, when those things come, I feel like we need to be ready to go.
Well, and I agree, and the only reason I wanted to stretch it out just a bit is because the things that the city goes through to try and tie up ends at the end of the year are, you know, many, many and detailed, so.
Can I add one thing?
Yes.
Can I also add just maybe more clarity to the process? So not necessarily who, but how someone would be obtaining that information, like what you guys are going to do, what your plan is to try and get that out there, so people who are trying to host or seeking these type of permits can find it easy.
Yeah, and that was part of my question as to whether people are aware that they need to do these things. So maybe, even though everybody sort of feels like they should know, maybe we can, you know, put something out several times, maybe once a month or something, just to let people know that there, there is a process that's involved in this. All right, we, we have held off, we didn't get you home for dinner, but we're waiting for our other member of the...
We can go into executive session for Lauren's item, and then if Jessica wants to text me when Dave gets here, we can come get him when we're ready for him for the other...
Okay, that sounds like a good idea. So now we are going to, to go into executive session. We will be back shortly, and that executive session, city council will convene into executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney, and 551.072, deliberations regarding real property, to discuss the following, right-of-way acquisition and 2.197 acres located at 19803 Morris Avenue, Mamvel, Texas. And we will return...
All right, it is 7:25 and we're going to reconvene into regular agenda having made no decisions in executive session. We are going to, how did we say we were going to do? We're going to take no action on item number 12 and going on to item number 13. I need a motion to direct staff to, they said though, I wouldn't remember it and they're absolutely right, direct staff to go forward with the contract on.
Well, Mayor, how about direct staff to go forward with the sale of the 2.197 197 acres on Highway 6 and authorize Kyle to enter into an earnest money contract with a purchase price of $900,000.
Okay. All right. All those in favor? All those opposed? And the motion carries 7-0. Okay, I didn't, I'm sorry about that heartache. We have at this point mayor and council comments. Does anybody have anything?
I'd like to remember all of our veterans this week.
Thank you, yeah. Absolutely. Yes, we have a couple, a couple of those veterans sitting right here, a couple of three, yeah.
I'm bookended, so.
Yeah, yeah, bookends, there you go. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
All those in favor?